I need to drink as much water as I can drink tonight before 12:00.
Good evening, I call this meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Branch Board of Trustees to order at approximately 7:01 PM on December 6th, 2012. Please join me in standing as Lynn Chaffin leads the board in opening prayer.
Please bow with me. Our dear, most gracious Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather together tonight. Give us wisdom and guidance as we deliberate the business of this district. We thank you for the opportunity to serve this district and that we live in this community, in this state, and in this nation. Dear Heavenly Father, as we look at the world around us today, we see a tremendous amount of strife. We ask that you be with our soldiers, our military, those who serve in foreign places. Be near them, guide them, comfort them, and keep them safe, and be with their families as they wait at home. Bring those that are away home safely. We ask that you be with our government, dear Heavenly Father, as we look at the things that are facing us as a country. We ask that you give them wisdom and guidance. We ask that you give them the thought that they should have in order to work out the business of this country. We ask now that you give us wisdom and guidance as we deal with the business of this district. We thank you for our teachers, our students, our families, and for our businesses. These things we pray in your holy name. Amen.
Please remain standing as Frank Shaw leads the board in a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. As a district, we dedicate all our efforts and resources to the education improvement of all students. The board uses this mission to guide all deliberations, decisions, and actions. You will get to see all deliberations, decisions, and actions of the board in open session, with the exception of some items which may be discussed in closed session, as stipulated in Texas Government Code Section 551, commonly known as open meetings law. These items typically deal with personnel matters, consultation with our attorney, and real estate. For the record, James Gould, Nancy Klein, and John Matthews are not here tonight. However, we do constitute a quorum and can conduct business on behalf of the district. That being said, I will turn the gavel to Dr. Burns for Agenda Item 1A, welcoming announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. We're so honored that you chose to spend a little bit of your time with us tonight. We're going to begin with honoring our VIPs, and I'm going to start with a quote by one of the famous philosophers, Dr. Seuss. "Today you are you; that is truer than true. There is no one alive who is youer than you." VIPs, tonight, we are here to celebrate you, our very important professionals. Twenty-seven years ago, we started celebrating you and the ones before you, our excellent CFB educators. This is our way of saying thank you for being you, teacher, educator, caregiver, friend, and so much more. You work relentlessly every day to help our students achieve at the highest levels. You give unselfishly, you care, you work diligently. That's you, and why we are here to celebrate you. So friends and family, please stand when your "you" is introduced, so we can recognize you as well. So now, Ms. Chaffin, would you please join me in the front to recognize our honored guests?
Good evening, members of the school board and Dr. Burns. I'm Lisa Williams, Principal of Davis Elementary School, and we're here tonight to honor Ms. Ari Jo. Ms. Jo is a CFB graduate who attended Blaylock Middle School and Newman Smith High School. She joined the Davis staff as our Teacher of Art five years ago. Ari stated that she chose art education in large part because of her high school art teacher, Ms. Fran Bulte, who inspired Ari to explore art deeply and widely, reaching beyond personal preference style. Outside of school, Ari demonstrates expertise in home improvement projects, such as drywall repair, appliance, and flooring illustration, well, illustration too, but installation. So one day, we're going to turn on HGTV, and it's going to feature Ari Jo. When she isn't remodeling houses, her two Vimmer Honors, Dexter and Duke, take Ari for runs at the local parks. From Ms. Jo's personal website, Michael selected and contracted with Ari to create a line of jewelry for marketing and advertisement. Her jewelry is featured on the Michael's website, and she has an art blog with step-by-step tutorials for several crafts, such as nail art. Ari established the First Davis Art Club with three boys and sixteen girls. The boys readily connected to the radial design project and practiced at home independently, and that is huge. She organized the First Annual Art Night at Davis, and the cafeteria overflowed with Davis families. Mothers and fathers busily produced all kinds of crafts and wore them. The parents were not the least bit interested in visiting with the principal, because they were so involved in their artwork. The Texas Association for the Education of Art, TMEA, selected Ms. Jo to present at the state conference both this year and last. She has also presented at Region 10, and this year Ari was selected to train her first student-teacher. It is my privilege and honor to present Ms. Ari Jo as the newest member of the very important profession of teaching.
Dr. Burns, Ms. Chaffin, and members of the school board. Hello, my name is Randy Wells, and I'm Executive Director of Special Education, and I'm here this evening on behalf of the Marie Huey Special Education Center staff, and I'm delighted to introduce to you Ms. Mary Ann Dutil, our newest member in the very important profession of teaching. Mary Ann has been an educator for thirty-six years, sixteen of them as an educational diagnostician in CFB. She has worked at Vivian Field Middle School, Creekview High School, and has been at Marie Huey Center since 2008. At Huey, Mary Ann is primarily responsible for our special education manager computer system. She maintains the program, works to make it customer-friendly and efficient, ensures the accuracy of our PMS data, runs reports, and trains district special education staff on using the system. Additionally, she evaluates private school students who can come to Marie Huey for evaluation, who attend non-for-profit private schools within the boundaries of CFB. Mary Ann is always willing to lend a hand to a campus diagnostician or any other staff. Her colleagues truly appreciate Mary Ann. To quote a few, "She's always willing to help. She has been an invaluable resource to me. I could not survive this job without her." She is very patient and never tires of hearing the same questions over and over and over again. On a personal note, Mary Ann was born in Hawaii, is married to Dr. Ellen Buffington, who is here this evening, has four sons. In the summer, Mary Ann chairs a Navajo ministry team, and for the past eighteen summers, she and her sons have volunteered on a Navajo reservation in Utah. Locally, she coordinates a drive to collect caps, scarves, and gloves for the Austin Street Shelter in Dallas. In her free time, Mary Ann enjoys cake decorating and often brings samples of cake for the more-than-willing staff at Marie Huey to enjoy. Mary Ann Dutil is an asset to our department. Marie Huey Special Education Center and CFB are indeed fortunate to have Mary Ann Dutil as a member of the very important profession of teaching.
Good evening, Dr. Burns, members of the board. My name is Dee Dee Lacy, and I'm the proud Principal of McLaughlin-Strickland. We are here tonight to introduce to you our newest member of the very important profession of teaching, Gretchen Felber. Gretchen has been an outstanding educator for nineteen years, eight of those on the McLaughlin-Strickland team. She helped plan Strickland's inauguration ceremony, and that was in 2006, and in 2007, McLaughlin's 50th anniversary. She enjoys gardening, reading, and traveling. She's a person who loves animals, has a great heart, and really desires to make the world a better place for all of us. Gretchen is a strong but quiet force in our school, often working behind the scenes to boost people to their highest potential. Her students say that she makes you work hard, set goals, follow rules, and sometimes, out of the blue, she takes you down to the principal's office, but only to brag about you and your accomplishments. And of course, she loves you. Her colleagues state that she is patient and sensitive to every student's needs. Her team describes her as extremely helpful, kind, knowledgeable, and proactive, and I would add that she saves everything, which makes it easy for us to go to her for just about anything. As a student, I mean, as a teacher of math and science, she's been referred to at times by her students as Ms. Frizzle, and I'm sure it's only because her students have so much fun in science class. Throughout the years, she has gone above and beyond to ensure our kids have the quality after-school clubs in addition to the regular day. Clubs such as Science Club, Green Team, she's helped with a fifth-grade mentors, and as you can imagine, she always helps lead our science fair. She's also a huge part of our parent education committee. Gretchen is committed to our kids, our parents, and our staff. McLaughlin-Strickland and CFB are indeed fortunate to have Ms. Gretchen Felber as a member of a very important profession of teaching.
Good evening, Dr. Burns and members of the board. I'm Roland Harris, one of the Assistant Principals at DeWitt Perry Middle School. I am honored tonight to introduce Perry's newest member of the very important profession of teaching, Ms. Rebecca Yaskus. Rebecca was born in Guatemala. At a very early age, she told her parents she wanted to be a teacher. They told her, "No, you are going to be a secretary where you can meet and marry a rich businessman." Rebecca became a very unhappy secretary. She moved to San Diego, taking a part-time job as a high school bilingual aide. Teaching has been her love and passion for the last twenty-two years. For the past seven years, Rebecca has taught at Perry. Her AP Spanish students consistently take and excel on the AP Spanish test. Last year, fifty-seven of her sixty-two eighth-grade students received college credit after their time in Rebecca's Her students say she is a good role model for me, because she has succeeded in life and has a wonderful job. I think I might want to be a teacher in the future like her. Another student says she is devoted to teaching us when we need help. Ms. Yaskus has a good sense of style, she helps us do our best, and always has a smile on her face. The students love Ms. Yaskus. She is truly devoted to them. She spends evenings and weekends working with them to prepare for their AP test. She knows her students, their families, and always expects the best. All her students will tell you she holds them to high standards in the classroom. I would like to close with a favorite Ms. Yaskus story. Rebecca's reputation as a strict teacher went to an entirely different level. One day, one of her students saw her in the store. A young girl was walking down the aisle when her older brother abruptly grabbed her by the collar and said, "You can't walk down that way. See that lady over there? That's Ms. Yaskus. She eats children, so let's go a different way." Unbeknownst to the boy, his mother told Ms. Yaskus what had been said. Fast-forwarding to the next year, this student returned to Perry to visit some teachers when he happened to see his previous Spanish teacher, Ms. Yaskus. He entered her room to tell her how well he was doing in his high school classes, especially Spanish. She responded by telling him how proud she was of him, and then added, "Aren't you glad I didn't eat you?" At DeWitt Perry, we are proud to announce Ms. Yaskus as our newest member of the very important profession of teaching.
All right, we'll be introduced by Mr. Frank Shaw, and that's our business partner, Mr. Shaw.
Tonight, on behalf of Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District Board of Trustees, it is our honor to recognize First Baptist Church of Farmers Branch for their involvement in our partnership and education program. We are blessed to have a relationship with First Baptist Church of Farmers Branch. Their constant outreach is an example of what is possible when a public school and a community of caring individuals work together to be partners in the education and welfare of our students. First Baptist Church of Farmers Branch has partnered over the years to encourage and assist our students and families with education and personal needs. They have been hosting the School-Age Parenting Program's Care Fair for ten years. The Care Fair for School-Aged Parents is an all-day conference to address issues specific to the needs of these young parents. At the Care Fair, members of the First Baptist Church of Farmers Branch escort our students to their sessions, prepare and serve lunch, provide door prizes, and create a great experience for an enjoyable and educational day. Members of the First Baptist serve as a host to aid and guide groups of students throughout the day. The host takes a sincere interest in these students. The care, concern, and kind hospitality makes a lasting impact on the students. Each year, we have students that attended the year before. They can always tell you which hostess led their group the previous year. First Baptist opens their doors and hearts to help our students learn to be caring and attentive parents. On behalf of the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District Board of Trustees, and with Lynn Chaffin and Dr. Bobby Burns, Superintendent presenting, it is our privilege to present this plaque to First Baptist Church of Farmers Branch. Your church family truly exemplifies a meaningful partnership between our community and our schools. Thank you for partnering with our district for ten years. Accepting this plaque is Helen Joyner and Joe Dell Roberts.
We consider it a privilege and an honor to share this day in the students' lives as they pursue their education, and our focus is to stay in school and get your education. And I think one of your students says it best, so I would like to read a thank-you note that we received from one of the students after attending the Care Fair, and here it is. "You're the people that we most admire, the people that we most like to be. Your friendship, like a torch, has lit a fire deep within our hearts and desires. Because of you, we want to be great parents, touching someone's life as you've touched ours. And when need help, we know where to reach you, giving us the faith that we can shine. Though you must now leave, and we must part, a little piece of you remains behind. Held with gratitude within our hearts, a portrait of good and kind ladies. You will be a part of everything we do. Thank you."
That concludes our recognitions tonight. I do want to mention, and if you didn't get a chance to go by and tell the Tuba Ensemble, when you see them, next time you might tell them how wonderful the music is. We appreciate them coming here tonight to play for us. What a treat, what talented students we have to come and do that. Unbelievable. And speaking of our fabulous students, we have fabulous students from Earl Turner every week provide our board announcements, so we'll turn your attention to the screen.
Welcome back to a brand-new edition of the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District Board Announcements for the month of December. We are rocking and rolling through the school year and are very excited to bring you the news you need to know about the best school district this side of the Mississippi. Can you believe it is already December? We are basically halfway through the school year, gearing up for midterm exams that are right around the corner. In fact, early release and exam days for the district are on December 20th and 21st this year. That's about two weeks away for everyone keeping count. Here's the early release schedule you need to know for the district. On December 20th and 21st, elementary schools will release at 10:40 a.m. High schools will be right after them at 11:20 a.m. Then, middle schools will release at 12:00 p.m. noon. B. Salazar will be on a slightly different schedule, releasing at 10:35 a.m. Mary Grimes and Early College High School will not release students early on these days. For all the pre-case parents in the audience, you have a special schedule. Here are the dates and times for your early release. Students that normally attend school in the afternoon will dismiss at 10:40 a.m. on December 20th, and students that normally attend school in the morning will dismiss at 10:40 a.m. on December 21st. After the last school is released on December 21st, the district campuses will start their winter break, which is officially scheduled for December 24th through January 7th. Our teachers come back on Monday, January 7th, for a teacher workday, and our students get an extra day and get to start the new semester on Tuesday, December 8th. We wish everyone a safe holiday during their break. As the semester winds down, we want to congratulate all of our students competing in various fine arts, athletic, and organization competitions. Check out the great things students are accomplishing at www.cfbisd.edu/accolades. And if you have a special story, or just want to tell us how much you love CFB, or just want to check out other people's stories, visit our testimonial page at www.cfbisd.edu/testimonial. Well, that's it for tonight's announcements. There will be a work-study session for our board members on December 20th at 6:30 p.m., and our next scheduled board meeting will be on Thursday, January 17th at 7:00 p.m. Meetings are in the Administration Building at 1445 North Perry Road in Carrollton. Good night.
Let's give her a hand. Great job. Mr. Fleming, members of the board, I do have one other recognition announcement I'd like to make at this time and for the audience. We had a very special event this week, our First Annual Secondary Literacy Night, and they had a really cool t-shirt, and I was going to wear it, but I didn't have a tie to go with it, but it says, "Fight evil, read a book," okay? And it was an outstanding event, and I see several of you out there that were part of that. Please stand up and let us recognize you for that outstanding event. Shirley Wright, your team, Isabella, Olivia, please stand up. It was a great event. You know, we always do literacy nights at the elementary level, but the secondary level, you know, we don't have them stop reading after we teach them to read. You know, we want them to keep reading, so it was a great event. But seeing that t-shirt in the great event, it reminded me of a quote from Lyndon Baines Johnson, and I think it's so appropriate for a school district as well as a community to believe in, and that is, he said, "A book is the most effective weapon against intolerance and ignorance," and that's absolutely true. So, fight evil, read a book. Okay? Thank you. Mr. Fleming, that concludes our announcements and recognitions.
To our honored VIPs tonight, we thank you for your continued commitment to excellence in the First Baptist Church of Farmers Branch. I'd like to thank you for continuing to be a trusted, valued, added partner to the district. Before moving on to our next agenda item, I'd like to remind the audience and the board, we encourage comments from citizens of the district and/or from district employees. Anyone wishing to speak, either as an individual or as a representative of a group, may do so during this Agenda Item 3A, Audience for Guests. The board asks that comments pertaining to public education issues be no longer than three minutes. Remember that the board may not discuss or act on any issues that are not posted on our agenda for tonight's meeting. If an issue, if an item, issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the board would defer discussion until appropriate time during the meeting. Our next agenda item would be Agenda Item 2, Report by Superintendent.
Do you have a brief recess before?
Brief recess.
Yeah, before the report.
We can. Before that, I'd like to give a brief recess. It is now, what is that, 6, 7?
It's 7...
7.
7:27.
It's now 7:27, and we will be back in session at 7:35. Perfect. Why doesn't I say that on my sheet, y'all? I call this meeting with Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees back to order at approximately 7:35. We will continue on with Item 3A, which is Audience for Guests. Audience for Guests is a mechanism that the board uses to receive...
We skipped Item 2. We skipped 2. Yeah, go to 2.
Excuse me, I skipped 2.
Yeah, that's where we got you off.
We got you off there, wasn't it?
You did, didn't you? For our superintendent.
Yes. Item 2, Report by Superintendent, Report 2.
How are we doing?
As present.
Okay, we're going to go to Item 2, Report by Superintendent, Presentation of Student Achievements.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. Members of the board, as you know, we have one goal in this district, and that's about high achievement for all our students, and so every board meeting, we focus on student achievement in CFB ISD. And tonight, our presentation is regarding our bilingual ESL program, but I'm going to give you just a little context and purpose of, we have a purpose because we believe in highlighting our student achievement programs, but the state also has some requirements. So, all districts are required to conduct a bilingual, that conduct bilingual education or English as a Second Language program shall conduct periodic assessment and continuous diagnosis in the languages of instruction to determine program impact and student outcomes in all subject areas. We take that very seriously. That drives our decisions in our programming. We believe in what the law says about providing bilingual education and having an impact in the language and the subject area as necessary. So, we are very committed to that philosophy, and you'll hear a little bit more about that in just a minute. But I'm going to turn it over at this time to Ms. Tracy Smith to introduce our distinguished presenters tonight and let you hear a little bit more about bilingual and ESL education in CFB ISD.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. We have a wonderful bilingual ESL department with people who work so very hard to make sure the education for our students is at the highest quality. I'd like to introduce to you those members, and so if I call, when I call your name, if you'd please stand. First, of course, our Director of Bilingual ESL, Dr. Isabella Pina Inorosa, Coordinator of ESL Instruction, Olivia Perez, our Specialists for Bilingual ESL Compliance, Sylvia Tereshuk and Martina Flores, Specialist for ESL, Kathy Bridges, Secondary Specialist for ESL, Ms. Anne Thomas and Ms. Sandra Coffey. Secondary Specialist for ESL, Ms. Anne Thomas and Ms. Sandra Coffey, Bilingual ESL ELA Coaches, Tere Troncoso, Ana Coto, and Arellis Reyes, our Curriculum Translator, Ms. Monica Coto, and our Assistant Curriculum Translator, Ms. Claudine Gayendo. So, we're appreciative of you all, and thank you for being here tonight. Dr. Inohosa?
Thank you, and good evening, Dr. Burns, and members of the board. The number of students who are part of the bilingual ESL population, or at one time in the program, this represents the number in CFB. Current ELLs in the district, along with students after exiting the program, are monitored for two years. We have the first-year monitor, second year, and at CFB, we also keep track of former students in bilingual and ESL. When you put all these together, comprises 44.05% of our total district population. Our district program, in the district, we have bilingual program, the one-way, fluent Spanish speakers, and the two-way. Our district bilingual program is an effective program based on theory, practice, and results. Theory and research recognized by experts in the field, practice and the implementation of this research, and the results in the district showing that ELLs overcome the barrier of language and acquire a new language. CFB also has an ESL program that serves students across all grade levels in the district. We also have a specialized academic program that specializes in serving newly arrived immigrants who have a limited time. They are in our program for one school year in this specialized program for newcomers. It allows them to acquire English skills, provide acculturation to the United States, and we encourage literacy in their language as well. CFB follows the pattern of diversity as shared by demographers across the DFW area. I want you to note that these are the languages spoken in the district based on PMS, district-wide. The previous slide showed you the languages in the district. This slide here, these are the languages of the ELL population, the English language learners, in the bilingual and in ESL. Out of 1,265 school districts in the state of Texas, CFB was identified as having an exemplary newcomer program. This was based on a three-year study conducted by the Center of Applied Linguistics on behalf of Carnegie Corporation of New York. The slide shows, these are the only Texas newcomer centers in the state of Texas. Here we see a few of our newcomers in the Carrollton Farmers Branch. ELLs benefit from the natural approach to acquiring a language. Listening is the first, speaking, reading, and writing. We're highlighting also our middle school dual program. The goal of Carrollton Farmers Branch was to continue expanding the dual-language program to middle school. With parental support and district initiative, this allowed us to continue the program in Field Middle School. Our vision for the future for this program, in 7th grade, we would like for the students who are going to take the dual-language, Spanish dual-language, pre-AP, and 8th grade, Spanish 2-AP, they will be taking the AP language exam. Those who score a 4 or a 5 will move on to 9th grade, Spanish 4, AP Literature. Those who score a 1, 2, or 3 will move on to Spanish 3, AP Language. These are our students, the first cohort of the two-way dual, now at Field Middle School. Here we have a writing sample of the dual-language students. The students are learning content in Spanish, not Spanish. They're not learning Spanish, they're currently learning content in Spanish. It's an immersion program. This writing sample is of a native Spanish speaker in the dual language at Field. This writing sample is of an English speaker in the dual-language program. In elementary, we have 14 one-way dual-language campuses and three two-way campuses. We added McWhorter Elementary this year. It now has 2K classrooms for the two-way. In the dual-language program, we promote building professional capacity with teacher training, teacher fluency testing. We test our teachers in listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And we meet professionals, our district professionals create a Spanish curriculum to meet the needs of our students in our district. In a little while, you're going to see a video of some students, the alphabet created in that video was created by Carrollton Farmers Branch. This is an example of a Kinder lesson that we use, a CFB product. And now you're going to see two-way dual.
¿Qué letras es esta?
B.
We use no translations. Students are immersed in the language.
Vamos a ver.
B, 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 B.
Al revés.
Alphabet and the lessons we use in our CFB product.
Al revés lo saben ya. Ahora dime cómo va. B, 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 B.
Al revés.
B, 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 B.
Ahora vamos a leer las palabras. Listos? Miren el dibujo y vamos a leer.
At times, when you're learning a second language, you can easily be distracted. The brain has to refocus in order to acquire and learn a new language. Spanish is a syllabic language, focuses on syllables rather than sounds. We have over 100 open syllables in order to unlock the basics, basics of reading Spanish.
Señálame una oración. ¿Dónde va la oración? Empieza con qué? Termina? Excelente. Ahora vamos a llamar a Victoria. Quiero que me muestres con tus deditos una palabra. Palabra. ¿Y qué palabra dice ahí? Excelente, excelente. A ver, trista. Señálame una oración. ¿Dónde empieza la oración? Señálame otra oración. Otra, otra oración.
A child will be pronouncing mother as she does in English.
Mama.
Mama.
¿Qué es una palabra que dice ahí qué?
Mama with an accent.
¿Qué dice aquí?
Mama, mama.
Mama, porque tiene esta cosita que llama tilde o acento. Mama. ¿Cómo dice ahí? Excelente, mama.
Thank you.
Dr. Inohosa, would you explain to them the makeup of the two-way dual and what we're trying to strive or try to achieve with the percentage of bilingual kids or Spanish kids and English-speaking kids?
Every classroom has approximately 50% English speakers and 50% Spanish speakers. Right now, at Stark, we have two classrooms, 40, approximately 40 students in Kinder, English speakers, and 40 Spanish speakers. So then, we put half and half, excuse me, 20 and 20, 40. 20 English speakers, 20 Spanish speakers. At Stark, we have the same components, and at Thompson, Kinder through 5th grade. And so, right now, we're up to 6th grade at Field, and McWhorter is beginning their program.
And how many are in the 6th grade at Field?
Because it was the first cohort, and many students moved, and we had different identification back years ago. Right now, we have five, I believe, six, five or six students who are English speakers, and 13 who are the Spanish speakers.
Okay, so 19 will be multilingual or bilingual, including the Spanish and the English.
And the English speakers, yes, sir. And we did test our, we also test our English speakers in Spanish. We tested approximately, I believe there was about six or seven tests that last year, English speakers, they took the Spanish star, did very well on their levels.
Now, are the Thompson children going to Field also? Are, when, that program isn't through 5th grade yet, is that right? The Thompson children, the Thompson two-way dual, are they through 5th grade yet?
The Thompson are through 5th grade, yes, this year.
Are they going to Field to continue?
That's a discussion we haven't had, but I believe we will.
So, they're in 6th grade now, but we don't have anything at Perry or at the other middle schools for those students.
No, the one we have right now is at Field only.
Only at Field.
So, that's a discussion.
But Thompson is in the 5th grade.
Thompson's up to 5th grade.
They're in 5th grade now.
So, we'll be looking at, you know, of course, to maximize staffing, all going to Field would be the best, you know, economic model, but, you know, we'll look and see where we have staffing opportunities to continue that for them because we believe it's the right thing, and obviously, we've already got the model going at Field, and it's very successful. So, we'll try to figure out how to do that at, you know, Thompson can, you know, they might be at Long, some of them might be going to Long.
Right.
So, we want to figure out where we maximize staffing to go with it, you know.
Well, and wouldn't the kids, I mean, you're only in kindergarten at McWhorter right now, correct?
Right.
Correct, so they have
Correct.
They have seven more years.
So, you've got six, five more years there.
Correct.
Six years. But they would be able to go wherever Thompson goes, probably.
Yes, yeah, yeah. We'll kind of see geographically what's the best place for those kids and try to continue it. It's the right thing, because it's the right thing for kids, both of Spanish-speaking and of English-speaking. I mean, their kids are coming out with two languages.
But we're really increasing in numbers, right? I mean, I know that we had to add another session at Stark this year in kindergarten.
We had to add another section at Stark and another section at McWhorter and at Thompson. And we continue to have a waiting list.
Yes. For the Kinder video, how long ago was that done? I mean, those kids
The video right there was done about two weeks ago.
That is amazing.
Amazing.
That is amazing.
Board members, are there any more questions? Dr. Burns and the superintendent staff, I want to thank you for the report on student achievement regarding our ESL program. It was a nice presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming.
Thank you.
Thanks to all our team out there. Keep up the great work.
Next, we want to continue on with Item 3A, which is Audience for Guests. Audience for Guests is the mechanism for the board to use us to receive feedback and input from constituents. If you want to address the board, you will need to fill out a form, found as you enter the boardroom, and give it to Ms. Scribner. Ms. Scribner, do we have any?
No, we do not.
Thank you. In that case, we're going to Item 3B, Consent Agenda. Ladies and gentlemen, my next order of business is Item 3C, Report of, no, it's not.
This is after consent.
Yeah. There we go. Consent Agenda is a mechanism that the board uses to approve a number of routine items together with a single vote in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. The public notice for this meeting includes the list of all consent agenda items, and the board has been provided ample information about these items in advance. Prior to any action taken on the consent agenda, board members may request withdrawal of individual items for clarification or discussion. Board members, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Seeing none, Mr. Fleming, I'd like to make a recommendation that we pass the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that. Mr. Fleming?
All in favor? All opposed? Unanimous? And ladies and gentlemen, our next order of business for this evening is Item 3C, Report of Continued Education Credits Earned by Members of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD School Board of Trustees. Each year, elected school board members are required to obtain continuing education training. Texas Education Code, Section 11.159B, requires that the statutes of continuing education credit be reported during the last regular board meeting of the year, and that information is reflected in the minutes of this meeting. Therefore, it is my pleasure to report that each board member has exceeded the state requirement. As our new board member, John Matthews, has documented his completion for his required orientation to the local policies and procedures for CFB ISD, and three hours of orientation for Texas Education Code. All seven board members and Dr. Burns have documented and met the requirements for three hours of training and team-building and assessments received during November 8, 2012, Team of Eight Training. State of Texas requires annually an additional five hours of continued education and assess needs. As of November 28, 2012, board members have documented the following number of additional hours. Lynn Chaffin, 13.75; Nancy Klein, 9.75; Richard Fleming has 13.50 tasking training hours, and also 52 hours, which comprises of diversity in education, team-building, and strategic planning, for a total 65.5 hours. James Gould has 29 hours. John Matthews has 20.75 hours. Frank Shore has 46.75 hours, and Nancy Watten has 20 hours. Fellow board members, thank you for your dedication and commitment to being the best leaders that you can be for the district. We have high expectations for our students, teachers, and administrators, and staff members. They deserve our best. Next, we will move to Agenda Item 4. Are there any comments from any board members regarding items? Go ahead, Frank.
Well, this may not be a board item, but I think it's pertinent, and if I'm not aligned, someone let me know. I just want to applaud you, Richard, for handling this position tonight. We know that this is the first time you've been in this position. I think that you have conducted the meeting admirably, and barring a word that I learned last night, your ability there tonight demonstrates that talent is ubiquitous in this district.
Thank you, Frank. Thank you for those kind words, Mr. Frank Shore. Board members, our next order of business is Board members, our next order of business is, excuse me, will be Agenda Item 5, Closed Meeting. It's authorized under Texas Government Code, including but not limited to Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorneys.
You can ask if there's anything for closed session.
Do we have anything for closed session, Dr. Burns?
Mr. Fleming, we do not.
Thank you. Well, I think we've come to the end of our meeting. It is now eight o'clock, and we're in this meeting. Thank you, guys.